On the Pioneer, Bill, you'll see a bunch of chicken scratch. They build this incorrectly, I caught it, I called them. They put it back down to the normal, but because we are still on copper and we are not on their fiber optics, they're giving us a twenty dollar a month credit. So now it'll be seventy-five dollars plus the phone, so it makes it one thirty-three eighty-nine. But when I opened that bill, I choked, because that was wrong.
All right, number four discussed take action on board trustees. We'll revisit contract proposals made at Waste Connections and Veterans Waste Services. The board of trustees will... Recite their previous vote to accept the proposal submitted by Veterans Waste Connections. The vote was passed during the special meeting of April seventeen twenty-five. It was improper because of the board and trustees did not have finalized contracts.
Discuss them yourselves between the two. Um, we do have Stacy from Veterans here tonight, and we do have Brittany, and I apologize, David from Waste Connections.
What I'm looking for is section nine...
What?
...of the contract.
With who?
With Waste Connections.
What's section nine, are you...
There, well, that's what I'm saying, there's no section nine rates agreed upon in this contract.
And y'all got a copy of the email from Brittany addressing Mr. Beverly's concerns? That's Veterans.
And at the time, I didn't, I wasn't aware that what dollars it done is that they had a five-year contract to twenty-third Waste Connections. I wasn't aware of that, it felt like. And about, I know Veterans said, is it a year-for-year deal? But on the last page, you look, it says for five-year contract.
Yeah, till five years.
Yeah. So that still goes to twenty-third, twenty-third one. All people, people want it. And like I say, I wasn't aware of that with the deal till I got the contract, looked at it. Thought it signed the deal back to, it was supposed to be till twenty-third. I don't think y'all were either, were, were y'all aware of that either?
I wasn't even aware of it. I mean, until I was told that I didn't know about it when we had the meeting in April.
Should we call that contract, the whole contract?
Um...
Would you call that contract?
Oh, I guess.
No, could make a mistake, we didn't have a contract.
Okay.
Mistake, we didn't have a contract.
So there's that we didn't have a contract.
Maybe that makes a lot of trouble then.
That's what I understood it was, that we were so far out, they...
Yeah.
Yeah, we got one that thought if I had that... From that one, we don't know.
I think we're all going to... I want to get a little more...
I think twenty-sixteen...
Twelve.
Yeah, twenty-twelve.
Yeah.
And that was back when it was Public Water Works of Bradley. That was before the Water Board went separate. It was Public Water Work, or Public Works Authority of Bradley, by then.
Yeah.
So the town of Bradley does not have a contract with anybody, basically. If I bring that right. Would that be right?
And let me know if I can add some clarity to that, um, at least from our perspective.
Because we don't have a public works authority any longer, we have a rural water district, so...
That is totally separate from this board.
Correct, which is, the issue is, is the agreement we have, right, that you guys are referencing, that's from...
Twenty-twelve.
Twenty-twelve, right, it says, uh, provided that neither party, provides the other party with written notice, notice of its intent not to extend this agreement, right, we have to have a hundred and eighty days, right? So, the issue is, we don't, to even nullify this public works authority of Bradley contract, we would need, um, some sort of nullification, right, on, on one of these anniversary dates, right? Successive anniversary dates from, um, these dates, right, from the original contract date.
Yeah, but you're asking a board, and I'm not trying to be argumentative or rude, but you're asking this board to fix something that was done back in, or to be adhered to something that was done back in two thousand twelve...
Right, and the issue is, is that's not...
That we had no control over.
Right, and that's not our business, right, that's, that's your guys', right? The, the, our issue is, is we've never had an agreement, so according to our contract, that we have, right, um, it's never been nullified.
Right, I understand that.
Which else said on the other hand, you don't have any contract with us to start with?
It was just ISR, I...
So, the original contract, ISI, um, that company was sold to WCA. WCA was then, um, WCA and Waste Connections did an asset swap. And we have the signed consent from the town of Bradley allowing us to take over that contract from WCA. So we do have a valid contract.
That was the one...
We have the consent where you guys voted on it in a council meeting, where Waste Connections and WCA did an asset swap, so we got all of their assets in this area. So that's why there's still WCA containers, they're now owned by Waste Connections, and that letter there is the board's voting and approving it, so we do have a valid contract. It's, now we're on it, does it say Waste Connections, but that's because it was assigned to us, and then it's auto renewed over the years.
And you can't have a multi-year contract with the town of Bradley, it would have to be three-way public works authority, and since that's no longer a, a valid entity, um, it would go year-to-year basis.
But even if it, if it gets, you know, defaulted to a year-to-year, would we still have another year contract?
Because at least they wouldn't be stuck until twenty-thirty.
Say that again?
That they wouldn't be stuck until twenty-thirty.
Correct, if, if we have to find a point to where the Thor, or the Public Works Authority was dissolved, and if that's the case, then the contract would be year-to-year. We're still in a contract right now because there was no notice given, a hundred and eighty years, basically.
Till next year.
A hundred and ninety-four.
A hundred, well, we'd have to give a notice in November, then?
Yes, and I, I want to point out...
I'm just clarifying, so that I have proper notes for the meeting.
I do want to point out, um, our franchise fee that's in this. I think that's a significant thing to look at in our contract that we're giving back to the town. So, we will be taking over the billing, billing each customer directly, handling the collections, all of that, and then each quarter, you're getting a percentage of that back. So the town doesn't have to be involved with the billing at all, and you're still gonna make money off of it, because of our collections, and that's a significant amount of money coming back to the town without any work.
I just kind of feel like, maybe if, uh, if it was a yearly contract deal, why didn't y'all come to the center, you know? This many years now, you know, and...
We have, um, and I, I've talked to multiple people, we've came back in twenty-twenty-two, we tried to get on the agenda, and we've tried for the last several years to get on the agenda, but it's turned over and the, until Rachel came on, we weren't able to ever get on the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and I can ha, I can send you the emails, I want to say it was a... I apologize, because I might have the name wrong, Kirkpatrick or Fitzpatrick. We have, I have emails trying to get on the agenda as a council member, like, I could find the emails. I, I don't remember her name, but back, all the way in twenty-twenty-two, we've been trying.
Yeah, that's what I do, I do remember at that time. Yeah, I've been on there, and see, yeah, I've never been, I've never seen the paperwork on it, none of them been running for me on it.
Kathy Fitzpatrick, Nadalyn, um, we've, we've tried for years.
See Nadalyn, she know I went to board.
I understand, but it, I mean, this is starting back in twenty-twenty-two that I've been trying to get on the board, or on the agenda to discuss this, because back in twenty-twenty-two, Kathy had mentioned issues with billing, and we had offered to help then, and the original rates we offered back in twenty-twenty-two were the same rates that I had proposed the very first time, and then we went back and sharpen our pencils got a little bit cheaper, but back in twenty-twenty-two, it was the same rates we had proposed. And, and I have all those emails to Kathy, asking her to get us on the agenda. So, this isn't something we just decided to try overnight, we've been trying, I promise.
Because Kathy was just a, she was actually a board member, she was just the clerk for a short time. Before her, it would've been Charlene, and then Jaden would've been at the board.
You have any questions?
So lately, or what do you, obligated?
We're obligated to them till July of twenty-twenty-six.
Unless we get, and...
Unless we renew a five, uh, give a hundred and eighty-day notice to them. I see...
I see it as our responsibility for them to get on to us, I mean, that's our responsibility, that's ours, that falls, the burden falls on them.
But if they don't reply, then they can't be put on the agenda. Everybody has to reply to me, even you all, about things you want on the agenda.
Somebody sitting here defending, saying, on the other side, to say that, I mean, I don't know, I just...
Well, we have, we have the proof, right, so, so that's the problem is, I'm, like, if I'm in your guys' shoes, the problem is, is we have proof of us trying to reach out and get on the agenda, right? So, then it, it's Nolan Boyd, right, that argument, and, and I'm not, you know, it's just, I'm not trying to, all I want to do is provide good trash service, right, I'm not trying to butt heads, right?
Did y'all bring your email to show us, or...
And I could probably find them, but I, I didn't expect it, I don't know that my phones can go back to twenty-twenty-two, I didn't think it would be a topic, but I'm, I'm happy to see if it'll pull up.
I'd say the last thing I seen, anything was signed with Juanita Brown and Donna, and that was...
And twelve, and then Donna signed on, on two, third, March thirty-first of two thousand sixteen, saying that they bought out SSI, or SIS.
They could be the hundred cents in, I mean, you got somebody at that time, I mean...
Right, but it is up to the town clerk to respond.
Right, yeah.
So I don't know, I can't say, because I was not involved, so...
There's been a lot of turnover in your town hall, correct?
Uh, Clark, while you're out, but I've been on board for a long time now.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like we're at least locked in till Jan, July first of twenty-twenty-six.
Which, and then if you wanted to...
And if we give notice in November of twenty-twenty-five, then we'll be free to go wherever we want after that one year.
I say we, um...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, at the minimum, right.
We need to talk to our lawyer about this.
Yeah, we need to talk to our lawyer about this.
Okay.
Can I ask one question? Why, we have no say, so, you know, that's between them, but saying when y'all's up, how soon are y'all gonna come in and get y'all's dumpsters and poly carts? I mean, because she has a big family, they have a, a big family, how soon are you gonna bring yours in, you know what I'm saying?
I mean, as of right now, it would've been the July first.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying that if anything swap over, that's all the thing I worry about, coming in on anything is... Like, would the town have to go without? Okay. You know, I just told anybody, you know, a week or two, you're in a trash can or dumpster or something, you know what I'm saying?
And I think it just kind of seems, I mean, when y'all was here at the last meeting, why didn't y'all tell us this, that, you know, that we're locked in with y'all with a contract, and we didn't, you know...
Well, to be, to be honest, we didn't, this was all just a billing thing, right? This wasn't, we never went up for bid, right, this contract wasn't up for bid, there was no, typically, right, we're, we're ready if, if, if things are done the right way, which is, uh, we get a notice, right? That, hey, we would like to go out to bid, and then we can, but there, this wasn't part of the discussion, because it's not, uh, it's not part of our contractual agreement, right? Which is, we get notice if it's gonna go out to bid, so, um, this wasn't, this contract was never out to bid in the first place. This was disbill.
We were asked to present, right, to take a bill and not ask the, anything else.
Yeah.
Well, the, the deal was, it, it was supposed to be upward contracts, what the deal was, you know, I mean, we were looking at other contracts, you know, because when they come out with that price at twenty-seven dollar poly cart, which was, that was kind of insane, you know, I mean? And then, uh, y'all come out with twenty-seven dollars, and then we get another bid, and y'all move them's up for bids, y'all lowered your price, why didn't y'all say then, that, you know, you got a hundred and eighty days to bail out, or we're still locked in, or...
At, at that point, we weren't told another company was bidding, we were just told, hey, can... I know, but before we came to that meeting, we weren't told there were gonna be other proposals. There was, see if you could sharpen your pencil and come up with a better price, and that's what we did. There was no official request for proposals, no official request for bids.
Well, we told y'all to come back to the contract, because Veterans was here, and they was gonna come to the contract also.
Right, but it doesn't matter, because it was never up for bid.
Oh, yeah, it was up for bid.
Where are the bid specs?
Right.
There's no bid specs that were sent out or posted.
Right.
The deal was, y'all come to us with y'all's bid, we didn't go to y'all. Y'all only come to us and said, hey, we're, it's twenty-seven dollars a poly cart. We didn't go to y'all and say, we're gonna pay y'all twenty-seven dollars a poly cart. That's saying we said we'd accept more bids.
Right, you, you guys had come to us saying, we're, we need to adjust this billing thing, right? We're no longer able to handle billing, um, so then, the, the, the burden falls on us to come up with, okay, how do we make that work? Right, so that's what we...
The deal was, y'all come to us and said, y'all didn't have, we didn't have no contract with y'all.
We didn't say that, sorry.
Yeah, y'all, y'all did, you said, we had no contract with us. And we said, okay, then, if we don't have a contract, we're gonna go look for other companies to put bids in.
That's just, that's just not true.
Yeah, that is what's true, we can go back to Menz and Sheldon, that was true, what we said.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, so...
Well, and, and either way, we have a contract, it's right here, right? I mean, that's, and you, and we can, we can debate, that's a different question on, if you want to try to prove, right, that, uh, that it's no longer void, or no longer, uh, um, you know, relevant, because it's a different entity, that's a different argument, because as of right now, uh, we've got a contract here that is very active. We've been actively utilizing it for a long time, and we've reached out trying to...
But the last thing that you all have is ten, twelve, fifteen years ago.
Right, because he's carried over.
Two thousand sixteen, yeah, there's a consent.
There's a consent here that it carries over until we...
That's what I'm saying, it, it wasn't said at the last meeting, and y'all were trying to vote hard us in making y'all pay on a eight, nine, ten dollar poly cart, whatever it comes down to, you know? Um, and like I said, the reason y'all lowered your rates is because we said we had another company coming in. Once we had another company come in to give a bid, then y'all lowered your rates.
And none of this, none of this matters, right, because...
It seems like to me what matters is, now y'all just trying to push us in a corner and saying, hey, we got a contract, and y'all gonna stand behind it.
Well, we do have a contract, and we want, we want your business, of course we want your business, but...
Let me interrupt there, right here.
Can I?
No. He's talking about them coming back down. I talked to Rachel. And we both kind of discussed, I said, I, I really came forward to hike at April.
Yeah, right.
And she agreed. And then she and Turner got a hold of her.
Yeah.
To see if we could, if they could make some kind of adjustment, because, you know, we got a lot elderly people here, they can't afford no ten dollar a month job, or eleven dollar a month job.
Right.
But that's how that come about, and that's when she, Brittany come back around with this other proposal.
But we told them same time we was gonna do bids, you know, she knew there was gonna be bids, because we talked about it, you know, I mean...
But I think what they're saying is, because we didn't run an ad for bids, because this is a contract over a certain amount, but I don't see, it has to be over fifty thousand dollars for us to take bids, and we don't pay that in a year.
But over the mall, we've...
O M L statutes.
And it, again, it doesn't really matter, we were never given notice, right?
Okay, but we never, this group here, because whatever was done in the past, I'm not gonna comment on, because I was not involved in it. We never had contracts until recently, so...
Right, that's not, that's not on, that's not on us to know what turnover looks like, what inter, inter-town stuff is going on, right? We, as far as I'm concerned, right, I'm looking at this, okay, well, we're rolling over another five... We, as far as I'm concerned, right, I'm looking at this, okay, well, we're rolling over another five years, right? Nobody's giving us a, a, a notice.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, if we didn't know, we couldn't have given notice, and I get where you're coming from.
Cause it's the same argument for us, right?
I get that.
Yeah, it's.
If we didn't know.
It's like, it's like, between us and y'all, we didn't know, and y'all didn't hear anything, right? So, you know, that's kinda where.
Yes, ma'am.
The previous mayor that was here actually requested the contract from Waste Connections, and they never would provide one to the town, um, so if that plays any role in this.
Who did they request it from?
Um, I'm not sure. She just said that they requested it from Waste Connections.
I would love to see that email.
Yeah, and, and, listen, and we're, we're right here, right, and, and, the, and this isn't just a question of, of right now. I think, right now, I, I think it's fairly clear that we're, we're here till July, right, of twenty twenty-six. That being said, we still want to, uh, build good relationship and, and provide good service going forward, so, whether, I don't know, you know, this, about this claim or whatever, but we're here right now, and, and we've got contracts, and, and we're trying to do what we can, right? That was proved by what Brittany was able to do with, with, we wanna do what we can for this town, right? I mean, that's, that's a, a whole other, other topic, but we're willing and able.
So, uh.
I just feel like we're getting shoved into a corner, and we don't have no say in the matter.
Well.
Cause I, I feel like we, basically, we've got verbal agreements, while we got a contract, because, you know, they're saying on their side that they just keep on rolling it over, but, uh, we never, I, I have no contracts in front of me that says they can legally roll it over. Yeah.
Sir, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
If you, if we take the contract out of this and take this part aside, has our service failed in the last several years? Have we provided good service as far as you're aware, as far as you've experienced? I feel like we're getting into the nitty gritty and arguing, and that's not what we wanna do. We wanna be here and be a partner, and I think this has gone so far off that we're not wanting to try to pin you into a corner, but we're here, and we're passionate about this for a reason. We've been here for a long time. You're close to our home. We have people who live in this town. We have people that live all around this community in the rural area, so, you know, pushing you in a corner is not our goal, but I feel like we've provided really, really good service for a long time, and that original rate that we presented, it wasn't to strongarm you or come take advantage of. Small Town Waste Connections is in small town Oklahoma everywhere. That is our community, that is our heartbeat. So, for us to come in and take advantage of small town wouldn't be fair to ourselves. Our employees live in these small towns, they pay these rates. We matched the rates of Alec, but Rachel called them verified, so we didn't get this price out of nowhere. We matched our nearest community that we do the same service in, and when it was too high and the amount was too high, we went back to the table to see what we can do to still provide that service and still be able to give you back money each quarter. So, there's revenue coming back to you, and it's taking the responsibility off of you, so if we've provided great service over the years, and we're gonna give money back, I'm, I guess I'm confused on why you would wanna leave us.
Well, I, I think it is kinda on the deal. It, it all boils down to the money side, you know, I mean. I feel like y'all had respect for Lieutenant Bradley. Y'all would've come here with an honest, fair bid, that would've been really close to everybody else's. You know, I just don't want that number to just fell out of the sky on that, that price increase.
It's the town of Alex price. It's not, it didn't involve, we just matched their price because that's the nearest.
Yeah, they paid around twenty dollars a poly cart.
It's near the community, the nearest community that we do this exact same service, where we bid.
Well, I'm saying, we're, we're back to the initial bid. This is y'all bid now. You're saying y'all matching Alex, but in the past, y'all wasn't gonna match Alex. Y'all was nearly twice what Alex was.
No, it wasn't. She verified.
No, that was, yeah.
Seven, eight more dollars a, a bid.
No, it's the exact same.
No, it wasn't. I was Rachel, she.
I would've stayed twenty dollars a poly cart right now.
If.
Yeah, y'all came with a twenty-seven dollar bid.
No, they, they.
No, they paid, they paid, well, our highest offer.
Jim Missel confirmed that he pays twenty-seven something per poly cart.
Well, I talked to about fifteen other people, and they pay twenty dollars. I got family lived over there, be a matter of fact. You know, been on the county, city councilor for years, all that, you know, I mean, I, my, I just can't get my head wrapped around it, because the price increased so dramatic. You know, I understand a little bit, but seven dollars or eight dollars a bid.
And, and, and I get that, right? Cause it's, it can, it can be jolting to see it, a big old jump, right? And, and we were, that's, our god honest truth was, is we were saying, you know, okay, well, what's a fair price? Well, what does that pay, right? And so, that's where we, that's where we went, that's where our mind was at.
And then twenty twenty-two, it was the same exact, we matched Alex's price in twenty twenty-two as well, so we've always tried to match their pricing. Because it's the nearest community to here, similar in size, and will be the same, same franchise fee, so we just matched their contract.
And I, I wanna reflect what, what she said, which is, you know, uh, this is a lot, uh, of, of, uh, we're getting into weeds on something that, again, take a step back, um, we wanna provide good service, and I take pride on service that we do provide, right? And I take pride in the fact that we're willing to work with, with towns, right? Whether it be pricing, franchise fees, like she's, like she said, trying to help out, right? And so, we wanna make it a desirable contract, um, for you guys, so if it's, if it's a not, if it's non-desirable right now, then, um, that's a different discussion, right? But, but we, we do wanna make that, right? I think that we've done that, making it a fair contract.
I just think y'all covered that high price, and then all of a sudden, that didn't work, now we got another company here, been against you, now you're pulling a whole card over, y'all got a contract with us now.
When Rachel, when Rachel asked, when Rachel commented that the price is a little high, can you locate your prices and see what you can do? Never once in that conversation did she say Veterans Waste is coming in, because she doesn't have to tell me if they're coming in. She didn't say that in that conversation. So, when we went back to the drawing table, we didn't come back to the drawing table because of Veterans Waste. We came back because we wanna be here. We came back to see where we could save.
I just find it hard to believe y'all jumping off that seven dollars a poly cart just cause y'all would be good to us. I mean, I kinda find that a little far pitched. I mean, I deal with people on a daily basis. I've owned business for thirty-five years, and, you know, in my opinion, that's a little price gouging, cause you thought you could get away with it.
Well, you may be right in one way, but, then, their expense is gonna go up, cause they're gonna have to do the billing.
Right.
So, you know, I could say it both ways.
And if, if I understand the bids correctly, or the proposals correctly from the last time, we're a nickel higher than they are on the poly cart service right now, so with our franchise fee, I, I would think that we have a really competitive proposal that is really advantage, advantageous for the town of Bradley.
So, we're gonna. I guess continue like what our good July twenty-six, and for that, then, say what we wanna do prior to that.
But if we don't get the notice now, we're stuck in for another year again, but.
You have to give them a hundred and eighty days. That means the notice has to be given by November first.
That's what I'm saying, if we don't, then we're stuck into another contract again, you know.
Right, and I get, I get you. I get what you're saying.
I just, I think.
Did you wanna make a motion, Deany? Cause you did say something about tabling it and contacting the lawyer.
I'd say, I'd say we table, talk to a lawyer, too. A lawyer says about the contract, because that way, we're not, I'm not gonna get my face shoved in the sand or something. I'm not a hundred percent sure about, you know.
So, do you wanna make a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll say a motion. Cause I think both contracts need to be looked at.
Yep, I think we need a professional opinion on it, to see what's.
What's your vote on the motion to table this till we can speak to a lawyer?
Yeah.
Okay, number five, discuss and make, take actual approval of A U P from Rachel.
Okay, Barbara.
Right.
Barbara Fowler sent over the proposal. Um, if you go to the third page, where she types it out, um, this is for the June, the year, fiscal year ending June thirtieth of twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, pardon me. She goes on to say, as of, as to the town of Bradley, as of and for fiscal year ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, procedures performed. From the town's trial balances, we prepared a schedule of changes in fund balances for each fund, see accompanying Exhibit A, and determine compliance with the statutory prohibition of creating fund balance deficits and noted instances of non-compliance. No exceptions were found as a result of applying that procedure. This is, goes on to number two. From the town tri- town's trial balances, we prepared a budget and actual financial schedule for the general fund, see accompanying Exhibit B, and determine compliance with the legal level of appropriations by comparing expenditures and incomparances to authorized appropriations. Findings, the general funds capital outlay expenditures exceeded budgeted expenditures by thirty-one hundred dollars, thirty-one ninety-nine, pardon me. The solid waste funds personal services expenditures exceeded budget by ten thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars, and maintenance and operations exceeded budget by three eighty-eight. When I spoke to Barbara about this, she said that is a minor thing, because it is a budget. We cannot possibly know what kind of expenses we're gonna come into for certain things, so therefore, that's not a bad, bad mark on us. That's just a finding. Does anybody have questions so far? Number three, we agreed the town's bank account balances to bank statements and traced the timely clearance of reconciling items to report any significant or unusual instances of reconciling items that have not been cleared. All bank accounts were not reconciled. I, I don't, I wasn't here, I cannot comment on that. We compared the town's uninsured deposits to its fair value of pledged collateral to report any amounts of uninsured or uncollaterized deposits. No exceptions, no exceptions were found as a result of applying the procedure. Number five, procedures performed, we compared the town's use of restricted revenues and resources that exceeded two hundred and fifty dollars to their restrictions to report any noted instances of non-compliance. Materially restricted revenues and expenditures that exceeded two hundred and fifty dollars consisted of the town, street, and alley revenue and expenditures. No exceptions were found as a result of applying the procedure. And the next one was, we compared the accounting of the town's activities by fund to the legal and contractual requirements for separate funds to determine compliance with requirements for separate funds. No exceptions were found as a result of applying the procedure. We compared the town's account balances in reserve accounts to contractually required balances and debt service coverage requirements of bond indentures to the actual coverage to determine compliance with reserve accounts and debt service coverage requirements of bond indentures. This procedure was not performed since the town of Bradley does not have bond indentures. We don't have bonds. So, overall, she said this was, this was a good. Dean. Um. I am going to be tied up this week from like Thursday through the weekend on family things. Monday, I will scan over both contracts to Tara and Lucas West. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Or do you need me to do it tomorrow?
No.
Okay, sir. I'm just, I'm just asking, cause either way, I'll get it done.
Okay, back of the A U P.
Yeah, you have to.
To make a motion and we're per the A U P.
Yes.
Okay, number six. Discuss and take actual adding. Oh.
ADA compliant sidewalk to the entrances of the storm shelters at the Bradley Park.
But if we're gonna do the park, we're rolling it down and all of it.
Yeah, I was, I was asked to put it on the agenda as the ones at the park.
Cause if you don't, they're gonna charge you so much, then, well, once you can get a bigger deal for same price, you know, I mean.
And they need to be where you, like I say, you know, well, cause they have about a step up about like that, maybe high.
What you're accessible. Yeah, they'll probably come up to eat with the door, you know, come out. That'd be at least like three foot wide.
Four of them, correct. The one down the hill.
Five, there's five.
There's one up at Nadeline's.
Right.
By Nadeline's house, then there's the one across the street from Dean. There's the one.
Across street from me.
There's two at the park, and then there's one at, okay, so five. I apologize. I miscounted in my.
The one at Donna's. You got the one at Donna's, there's five total.
Yeah, yes, that's five. Yes, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. Cause I don't see the one at Nadeline's. It doesn't stick in my head, so I apologize. Um, she did not, I did offer to go up there, do the bug balm and whatnot, and she said it wasn't necessary. She'd take care of it, so I did supply her the bug balm.
I, is elections in the days?
That's for the Roll Water District. That's not for us.
Uh, I'll just curious which one it was.
Okay.
Make a motion for the C man?
Yeah.
Okay.
Same bit.
Yeah.
To gather bids?
Yes.
Okay.
I want me to tell them.
Who seconded it?
I, I did, I seconded.
Okay, sorry, Dean.
Tell them a broom finish on that, that way it's not slick, you know, I mean, cause regular power finish, you'll, it's like a skating rink, like, once you're wet.
I'm writing that down right now, sir, broom finish. And Zaino, what was your vote? Yes, okay, ma'am.
That way it's not slick or nothing when it's wet. You can actually get some traction on it, you know.
You want to read the fire marshal.
Discuss, take actual state fire marshal consultation in private, or they're poor. I'm turning that over to Mr. Rachel.
Uh, when he was here, he walked through, he said, we weren't bad, we weren't, and he's, minor little fixes. Um, have the suppression system at the community building inspected. Uh, we need a K-class fire extinguisher for in the community barn, an A B C-class fire extinguisher for the town barn. We need to install an exit sign right there where the entrance to the kitchen and one at the front door here at the community building, and install numbers on the community building and on the town barn for identifying of emergency services. Um, we have to have an exit door installed at the east side of the south wall at the barn in the garage area.
East side, south, okay.
One minute, four.
Yes, ma'am, okay. And the occupancy for the community building will be forty-nine people unless another exit or en- exit slash entrance door is installed on either the north or the south wall of community building. So, like, right there or right there, so, but I, I don't see, like, how a hundred people could fit in here comfortably anyway, so, but that's my opinion.
It'd be expensive, too, getting kind of that wall right up.
Well, what that had, had an extra cost, don't let there, they say some more extra cost, don't let, to jump it up to nine and a half.
No, the extra cost would be doing the doors.
Well, I know that, I thought, I was thinking somewhere in there, that it was, for a decent, we could increase it to nine and a half, but that was putting the doors in.
That was putting the doors in, sir, yes. And then number eight. And then number eight.
Okay, number eight, discuss, take, take action on purchasing exit signs, lights, and rest numbers, occupancy signs, material for doors, town barn, installation kit from home people.
Can I give you all pictures, I think?
Don't look at all that.
Yes.
I make a motion with.
I second it.
You say it.
Yes.
Okay. And the last one. We need to discuss and or take action on approving Rachel Snyder, town clerk, being able to change her name to Rachel Hester at Liberty National Bank. It's required in the meeting notes.
I might, I should.
Yes.
Deany's like, I just second that, I'm not even gonna worry about that.
Okay, well, we had to, we're.
Judge.
I'm sure.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Make a motion with her.
I second.
Yes.
Okay.
We got your thanks, Sam.
Now, um.